Okay, hello, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm so glad to see a lot of you online tonight. Thanks for coming. We got, I have some really up-to-date, brand-new info for you. Been having a lot of virtual IEP meetings this week. Today was the last day of school in our kind of Southern California area and many school districts. As you guys know, every school district has a different schedule. It doesn't even matter what state you're in. Every district just chooses their own schedule and how they want to do things. But before we get going, I want to introduce April. She, April, is the host of NetFrending. And last night, April hosted a young lady on the Spectrum, Caitlin, and I also was in attendance on that livestream. And it was an awesome, awesome. If you guys have a chance, go to my page. April's on there with her NetFrending group, and you can find that replay. And it's just, you're gonna love it, because it's a great way to see, wow, this is how this student on an IEP, she's on the Spectrum, she tells her story about how she grew up, and she graduated high school with a diploma. She went on, she's, she's very successful. She's affiliated with Disney. And it's just one example of what can actually happen to children if they actually get an education and they can reach their potential. She's a great model, and she's actually a spokesperson for young women on the Spectrum. So, hi, April.
Hi. Yes, and if you guys want to follow what we're doing, you can go to netfrending.com/moms, because we made it easy to remember. Yeah. And, and talking about what you were just saying, this girl that joined us last night, she also had her sister with her. So she gave her perspective from a sibling, sibling vantage point. And I just love hearing an adult on the Spectrum talking about their journey and also how she advocated for herself. I know Valerie was really impressed with that.
I was.
Yeah. So it's a great place just to connect with other people. And I know we've had some people from here peeking in there. And so don't be shy if you ever want to take a seat with us. We always post the guest link, and you're more than welcome to jump into a conversation at any time. And we go live Tuesday nights at nine o'clock Eastern.
Yep. And, and we talk about all different kinds of things, right, April? But mostly related to moms or parents. It can be dads, too. We welcome all dads. Parents of, of students on IEPs or parents of children with special needs. So that's what it's for. And, and I'm, I'm on there. Sometimes I just come in and say hi, and sometimes I stand longer. But it's not focused so much around special ed law or IEPs and, you know, our, our issues with IEP meetings. But it's more centered around just being a parent of a special needs child, what that entails, and all the different struggles, challenges, and successes, and what it means to be a parent, right, April?
Yes. And, and like last night, it wasn't even a parent. It was just
Yeah.
somebody who has a parent. And she was able, she was able to talk about what her mom had been through, being the mother of a child on the Spectrum. So it was, we got the whole gamut covered.
We did. And, and what's so interesting is her sister and her sister's perspective on what it was like to have a sister, an older sister on the Spectrum. And all of that dynamic, which is a whole nother world of perspective, right?
Yeah.
The siblings. So, yeah, so that's what we do with NetFrending. So thanks, April, for being here.
Thank you.
So, okay, guys, well, I wanted to let you know a couple of things, okay? So if you guys aren't, I, I get a lot, so I'm on, you know, many different websites, and I, I read many different articles. I'm always trying to educate myself, especially now with the school closures and the virus. And, and really, this virtual education world we're in right now, it's a whole, it's opened up a whole new can of worms in terms of advocacy. So advocates and attorneys from across the nation are trying to figure this all out with school district administrators. How are we going to make this work? What are, how are we going to hold districts accountable to, to remaining within IDEA? And how are school districts going to transition over to virtual schooling? And then I've also touched on the fact that we still don't know. Many school districts haven't announced. Are they going to open in the fall? Are they not going to open the fall? They are looking at the different kind of abbreviated schedule where they're talking about, which I think a lot of school districts are going to do this. Some are not going to open at all. But if they do open, they're going to do a abbreviated schedule where they're going to split the population, and your child's going to go to school two days a week, and then virtual two days a week, and then they're going to rotate on Fridays, which is going to include kids wearing masks, kids getting their temperatures taken, lots of medical issues or precautions to remain within CDC guidelines, which is going to cost districts money. And, and just additional, they're going to have to invest in additional curriculum, because virtual schooling is going to be still half of our child's future education. So if it's not all, if virtual, it's going to be at least half the virtual parents. So virtual schooling is going to continue to be in the near future for our child, which is why I keep talking about know your parent rights, know what to do in these virtual IP meetings, know what to expect, know what the law says, because otherwise, there's a lot of misinformation going around. There's a lot of confusion still. And so that, that's the purpose of really these town hall meetings. So, so today, I, I was, one of the websites that I go on all the time is called EdWeek. And that's really a, a site that is really for teachers. It's really for educators. And so, because I like to look at both perspectives, right? So you, we have the advocates and attorneys that are on the representing parents, and then we have the educators' perspective inside as well, right? So what they're talking about is that they're, they're discussing how they're very concerned about how much financing it's going to cost to open up schools again. And, and they're concerned about that. They're concerned about whether, they're even questioning, there was an article that said, "School districts are questioning whether it's even worth it to reopen, because it's going to cost them so much money to reopen. Is it better just to stay closed and to, to continue on that route with the virtual schooling and to address curriculum and, and build upon the virtual model?" So these are the kinds of things that are going on behind the scenes that most parents don't know about. So let me just read you a just little, little paragraph here, so that you can get a kind of a flavor of what I'm talking about. So this EdWeek, it's called the EdWeek Market Brief. Editorial team will present new data and analysis from school districts on what parents in their new roles as at-home instructors, that's what you guys are now, at-home instructors, need from the companies in the COVID-19 era. Meaning, we need more help. We need more support. And we're the teacher now, right? So we'll draw from original surveys. So they're taking all these surveys. Everybody's taking surveys now. Surveys is what's happening. I'm even going to be taking, doing surveys for my, my community next week. Everybody should be getting a survey from me. So they will draw from these surveys of district officials in which they were asked about their interactions with families and the kinds of support and academic resources parents so desperately need now. We'll also break down EdWeek Market Brief's recent reporting and research on where schools are on the path to reopening and what kinds of help districts say they need in specific areas as they cautiously set plans to bring teachers and students back. EdWeek Market Brief's editorial team will specifically present survey data on the following topics. My eye is twitching. I'm really tired, you guys. I had three IEPs meetings today. Okay. Number one, what product features and support do parents who teachers need to engage in students' learning need from companies? So what, what do parents need, and the teachers need to engage the parents in the students' learning? Okay. Number two, updated survey results on district's biggest purchasing priorities. See who I'm talking about? The funding, the purchasing priorities for the remainder of this school year and the next school year. The district's biggest purchasing needs in curriculum as they plan for school reopenings, and a look at district officials' early thinking about how they might attempt to create learning environments for the reopened schools. So learning environments, meaning how are they going to remain within the CDC? That the masks, the, you know, social distancing, setting the chairs, are the kids' desks 10 feet apart? That's why they're, they're splitting up the population, so there's not as many kids in the classroom, so on and so on. So I'm just trying to open your minds to thinking, to knowing, and being more informed on, this is what they're doing behind the scenes. They're having all of these kinds of meetings and brainstorming, and what are we going to do? How much is it going to cost? How are we going to work this out? And these are some of the perspectives they take in making these decisions, which we have no clue what that decision is yet, even though I believe they already have made the decision. They're just not telling us yet. So, you know, how are we supposed to prepare parents? If you don't know, is my kid going back to school or isn't my kid going back to school? And also, what I want to say is, you have the right. If you feel that you don't want your child to go back to school, because your child might be immune deficient or have some kind of health issues where you don't feel comfortable with them going back to school, you can opt to say, even if they do reopen with the amended schedule, you have the right to say, "I want my child to remain in distance learning. I don't want my kid to go back to school on the half-schedule" and go through all that, you know, shenanigans with trying to social distance. So we have that right. Some parents are gung-ho and like, "Oh, please, dear God, open the door so that my child go back to school." So every parent has their own perspective and their own needs, right? So, and I just want to give you a couple of other really good, the best tidbits out of the newest developments. So another thing in this article, in the EdWeek, they said that one of the benefits of not having the IEP meeting as scheduled, because I'm, I don't know about you guys, but what my experience has been is that the IEP meetings have all been late. They were, none of them were on time because of the closures. They were all late, and they, they restricted it to a 60-minute timeframe. And, and they, and they really wanted to opt out completely. And unless parents demanded or said, "I want my meeting," they basically waived IEP meetings and said, "We're going to make them up during the next school year." And this is what a lot of districts did. So I, you know, when I talk, I'm talking to the whole nation. So I'm not sure if this is happening in every state, but I've heard a lot of parents tell me the same thing. So I love to hear if there's people from other states that have had a different experience. That's why I have this open up to parents, so we can all share our experiences. So anyway, so one of the benefits, now this is talking about, so this is the districts talking, right? The educators talking. So one of the benefits of not having the IEP meeting as scheduled would be that it's not an opportunity for a school district to take services away from students during that time. Because when they develop a virtual learning plan, I know you guys have heard that, the DLP, we got a new acronym, the Distance Learning Plan, that, they can take away services in that. They can say, "Well, we're in virtual schooling now, so we can't give you two times a week of OT, so we're just going to take that out of your virtual learning plan." So this is what some of the things you need to be aware of, parents. You should never agree to diminishing or discontinuing or taking down any of your services, okay? And then another, we are encouraging families to document where the child is as far as skill level. Now, this is parents, this is moms, this is what you should be doing at home when you're working with your child. Document where your child is as far as their skill level, either through video or through data sheets, that kind of stuff. So that when the pandemic closures are over, they can see whether or not there's been any regression in skills or, for the students, whether that's academics or behaviorally, or anything related to occupational therapy, physical therapy, or speech and language therapy. Okay? And then one other good point I wanted to make is that they say, "Think about preparing an outline of distance learning services and get parents' input." Because basically, what's happened is the parents have now turned into the teachers. So they're even saying the same thing, because parents have turned into the teachers. And really, parents, that's not okay, because the teachers need to be the teachers still, and they need to continue to teach your child. So that's my point. And then I wanted to show you, right out of EdWeek, there, I'm going to share my screen with you, if I can, I hope it's going to be on here. But they actually have a, they have a agenda, an hour-long agenda that they've developed, that they're recommending, and now I can't find it. I thought I had it on here. Well, I'll, I'll put it in the, I'll post it in, when I, when I post this in my, when I post the video, the replay of this. But, and, and long story short, it's a actual agenda, a 60-minute agenda that they're recommending, that I know, the just, the IEPs that I've been going to, they absolutely stuck to this 60-minute agenda. And they identify, you know, introductions, five minutes. Present levels of performance, 10 minutes. Goals and objectives, 10 minutes. And so they cut it down, the annual into where it squeezes into an hour. And then they, they say from the very beginning, "Okay, we're, our agenda is going to be 60 minutes today, and here's our agenda, parents, and we're going to get done in 60 minutes. And if you're not done in 60 minutes," they say, "Well, we're so sorry, but we're done, and it's been 60 minutes. And so now we have to reconvene next school year." So what does that do to your parent rights? Parents, you're a equal IEP team participant. So it's really diminishing your rights as an equal IEP team participant, your parent rights. It also puts you on kind of like alert, like, "Okay, I only have 60 minutes. Oh, my gosh, I have to, I have to..." So you're kind of nervous, you're stressed out, you're feeling pressure, because you want to get through it, but then you can't get through it. And then what happens? You have to reconvene next school year. You don't have an IEP in place for when your child starts their first day of school next year. And so your child's starting the next year, and who knows when you're going to reconvene, so that you can complete your IEP, so you can get something in writing and something agreed upon. And this is what they're doing, and this is what they continue to do over the past two weeks in about, I think I've gone to about 12 virtual IEP meetings. And that's what they're doing. That's not okay. And so I just want to let you know that, parents, you, I mean, they shouldn't be restricting to 60 minutes. They just shouldn't be. It's supposed to be, you know, of course, we have to have agendas. They always have an agenda. And parents, you should have your own agenda as well. Here, district, here's my agenda. These are the things I want to talk about. These are my concerns. These are my requests. And then they usually embed your agenda into their agenda. And then, yes, you have a kind of like a timeframe, so we'll have, okay, we're, this meeting's a two-hour timeframe. Then when they get up to about the two hours, and they see, "Oh, look, we, we, we only have one other issue to do. Let's go past and we'll complete the IP today." That's how it kind of goes. You're working collaboratively together, and you want to complete the meeting, because who wants to come back to and reconvene to get it done, right? So, so if you don't have three more issues, that obviously is going to take another 45 minutes, then sometimes they'll go, "Let's do it." They'll ask the team, "Can you stay? Do you want to complete it?" "Yes, let's complete it." They'll do it. Sometimes they say, "No, I'm sorry, I can't." And you might have to reconvene. But now, in this situation, when they already are late, it's the end of the school year, to restrict us to one hour, and every single meeting I've gone to has to be reconvened. And now all these kids are going to start the new year without an IEP. And that's not even including the parents that didn't even have the opportunity to have a one-hour IEP meeting. Because there's thousands of parents that didn't get that opportunity, because they sent out a PWN saying, "Guess what, parents, we're waiving the IEP. We're not going to have it at all. You'll hear from us next school year." And then in little tiny writing, they said, where, most parents didn't even catch this, I had to tell them. They said, "If you don't agree with this, and, and you, and you, you think something different, if you, you, if we don't hear from you, we're going to assume you're cool, that we're waiving it, and we're going to just go ahead and do that." And so I told my parents, "Absolutely not. You have the right to have your meeting, and we're having our meeting." And we did, but then they restricted us to an hour. So those are the points I wanted to make with you parents tonight and the new information. So let's hear from everyone now. What, what, what has been your experiences? Who has had a virtual IEP meeting? Anybody wants to make a comment?
Well, I've had quite a few. And most of them haven't done this. But one remedy that at least reduces what they get out of it is to point out to them, "Look, under Section 504 in the ADA, the kid needs these things in order to gain equal access to the curriculum. And the Justice Department and the Office for Civil Rights have clearly said that you can't use idea hoop jumping to delay that." So we're not talking about idea here. We're talking about the kid getting whatever it is that we're needing here, so that he can have access to your curriculum. So you need to do that now, or else you're going to have a 504 and ADA problem. They, they love, idea procedural safeguards are written by Congress to protect us, but the districts use them to play keep-away and protect themselves. And that's bullshit. We can't let them get away with that.
Agreed, Peter, absolutely. Yeah, I called him on it. They didn't care. They said, "Oh, that's, that's nice, Valerie, but we're, we're, we're stopping now. The meeting's over. And we'll, we'll, the parents will be hearing from us." Or they didn't even say that. They said, "We'll have to reconvene."
Well, then what happens is maybe they need a filing, maybe under Section 504. They don't like those. They've got to appoint the hearing officer.
Yeah, we're working on that. We're working on that. I, I have about 10 parents right now. So, so holla, were you going to say something?
Yes. So we went ahead and had our virtual meeting. And right before that, when I found that it was just going to be an hour, I emailed a few times and saying, "One hour is not enough. I need more. I have, you know, my parent agenda, I have concerns. I don't want to feel rushed, and I definitely don't want to continue the meeting after school starts in the fall 2020." So I was that annoying parent. So finally, they said, "If we have to, you know, finish off at another meeting, then we'll make sure to do it before school starts." So like in the summer. So when the meeting did happen, we actually, like you mentioned, Valerie, they asked the team, "Do you guys have 15 more minutes that we can stay to finish this meeting?" And everyone, so we were able to go through everything. It was nice that we were able to go through everything. However, me and my husband kept looking at the time, like, "Oh, my God, we still need to do this, and we need to talk about this." We did feel rushed, even though we were able to finish in time. And then because we felt rushed, I, you know, missed having to go over the notes at the end of the meeting, having them read it for me, because it slipped my mind, because I just wanted to make sure I go over my concerns.
And they should have offered. You shouldn't have to ask them, but
They, they didn't, and
Because they already went over, so they thought, well, if mom
Well, please tell me you recorded the meeting at least.
Yes, definitely.
All right, so the notes aren't that critical if you recorded the meeting, because they send you the notes that they, if they screwed around with the notes and made them deceptive and everything, then you can show at hearing that what they did to the notes and thereby deny parent participation by, by falsifying the notes, which they don't want you to do that. So because you did record it, they probably recorded it, too, and you're entitled to their recording. You're going to be able to keep them honest in the notes or take advantage if they, if they're not. If you don't record it, then you're really in bad way.
I did receive, receive it, and I, I noticed in the notes that they didn't voice our concerns that we clearly were discussing for a while. Just like Valerie, you always say, they'll say it from their point of view. They don't really write it down as the way parents were discussing it. So I'm going to go ahead and reach out to them and say, you know, "I noticed you didn't state our concerns that we were clearly discussing for a while, and I would like for it to be, you know..."
But you have those concerns in your agenda that you provided before, so they, it's, is in writing, but yeah.
Not from them.
Pardon?
But they didn't write it during the meeting.
During the meeting. They didn't write it.
It significantly infringed on parent participation by leaving your concerns out of the notes, even though they were spoken of. That's something that you can take advantage of and cash.
Yes. Well, and today, that happened today, in a big way. So we were getting close to the end, and then they, they said, "Okay, well, we have 10 minutes. We're going to read the notes." They read the notes, and they, and everything in the notes was everything that the, that the school site team said, nothing that the parents said. And I, I, I said, "I didn't hear one comment or concern from the parent, and we need to go back and amend this." And it actually took them 20 minutes to amend the notes, because they didn't take notes properly. And then they had to stay, because they had to fix it. So that, that's something they had to do, because I
That was, that was mine, Valerie, right? Hi, this is Demetra. That was from today. Yeah, it took a long
I mean, it was at least 20 minutes or longer, right, Demetra?
It took a really long time, because we had to keep going back and making sure that it was the stuff that I said. So we have to remember, even our, our end for the meeting, write down what we say. And then when they do the notes at the end, make sure that that's included. We don't want that one side.
So you all acted like educators today. It's an educational institution, and you educated them. You made them know what happens if they want to screw around with the notes like that. They get to spend 20 minutes with you and Valerie, their favorite people.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And they, and they had to, oh, and then, then my meeting after yours, Demetra, I had the school site administrator say, "Nope, we're, we're stopping now. I don't care if the notes aren't read. We're stopping now." And I said, "No, no, no, we have to, we have to continue. We have to do the notes. No, I am not going to break the contract. We are not going to do that." And she stopped exactly at the minute. And, and I, and, and I said, "There is no contract, and there is no policy for a 60-minute IEP."
That was from our district? That was the, right after?
Yes, right after yours.
Same people.
That's going to look good in an evidence binder. It's going to sound good.
Yeah, it was on
It could even sound good at public comment in a board meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, it was on tape. So, yeah, so just, you know, this is good information for parents to know that. Violation, they, they just cannot do that. And we weren't even close to be, we, we were in the middle of a psychoeducational assessment, and she wouldn't let this IEE provider complete her assessment findings. She cut her off.
Okay, well, they sank their own ship, then. It just breaks my heart to hear this.
I know. Me, too. And she was adamant, and she was rude, even to the IEE provider, because the IEE provider kept saying, "No, no, 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 I'm, I'm happy to stay. I'm happy to stay and, and complete my findings." And no, that admin was not going to have anything.
That transcript is going to look good in the evidence binder, and then, and then take backing it up. And especially the snotty tone of voice and everything you seem to be describing could be helpful. Sounds all good to me. Look, they don't want to do the right thing, anyway. So when you get them dead to rights like that, you're more likely to get them to do the right thing, anyway. So it's all good if they did this.
Yeah.
Don't, now, don't let your adrenal glands suffer needless stress.
Yes. I know. You have to laugh, or
Indeed, yes.
Pull your hair out. Who else has experienced? What, what is, other parents have had experience with their virtual IEPs, or any other questions that you might have? Liz, you had your IEP. Pardon?
No, kind, there's no questions. Maybe there's answers.
Liz, you're here. I know you had, yours went pretty well, though. And they, they, I don't think, did they cut you off at an hour? Liz Beal? Is that Liz?
Yeah, but she's got to, if so, she's got to unmute herself.
You're on mute, Liz. You're on mute.
Maybe she had to step away.
Yeah, maybe. Step away.
My IEP was supposed to be an hour, but the teacher and all the other people on the team were like, "Yeah, we don't care." They kept going till almost two hours.
Really? See, that you completed your agenda and you got done. That's good. That's really, that, that's what it should be.
We got a survey for the entire county that I, because they sent it out on Survey Monkey. So I copied my answers. I copied the template of all the questions they asked, because they're surveying their stakeholders to find out what we would be interested in. But of course, their ideal is to bring all the kids back to school, but if that can't happen, and I reached out to my son's teacher And I reached out to my son's teacher and I said, this survey is, doesn't have any inkling in it of anything pertaining to special needs students. Are we going to be getting a separate survey? And she's like, oh, I just found out about this survey myself. And they apparently talked about it in the board meeting tonight, so I have to go find the replay for that. But they said that they have focus groups that include parents on them. But I'm pushing to get on one of those focus groups because I don't trust them.
Yeah, and they should have kids on, parents on IEPs in the focus groups.
Yeah, yeah, none, I mean, the questions they were asking are not representative of what a special needs child would experience in the setting that they were describing, so.
Right, so that's not okay.
No.
Well, like Marilyn Tully told me once, trust is not in your nature. At mediation. So it, and it's true. Maybe it's not true, but if it has been in my nature, it's been beaten out of me pretty well when it comes to start world.
Valerie, I'm here.
Oh, hi Liz.
Oh.
Sorry, I, I'm doing this on my iPad today and I wasn't sure how to unmute myself.
Oh, okay.
Um, actually, you know, because of your advice into coming with the parent agenda, I had my parent concerns on it.
Yes.
So we got, we, we actually got to go through my parent agenda and some of my parent concerns, but not all of them. But I, but today, the teacher did email me and said, well, we didn't get to touch on your concerns, but you had them written down and I'm going to address your concerns with you right now. And so, so that was good, you know, that was.
It's not good when you can't address parent concerns outside of an IEP meeting.
Can I, can I then email her back saying, thank you for addressing the concerns and emailing me and just forward it to Lori and say, these are the things we talked about? And then do a CC to the teacher?
That might work.
If, yeah, if Lori's willing to, if Lori's willing to include that in as something that, but I pretty, I, I can bet she's going to say, that happened outside of a meeting. I can't do it. But if she does, awesome. Especially if you're in agreement with the resolutions.
Right. You can change IP by mutual agreement without a meeting, no problem. So if she says, we can't do it, we're not going to put it in the IP meeting after you've already agreed on the thing. Well, that's a problem.
The concerns were towards the teacher, you know, and so, and, and so he addressed him and saying she would do this, that, this and that, that I was asking for.
Well, then she might do it then. She might do it. Yeah, it's just you always want everything documented in the IP because then it'll be legally binding. Right?
Okay, okay.
It has to be legal, it has to be documented somewhere. I mean, PWN is altogether legally binding. You know, anything they say in writing from an authoritative person is usable.
Yeah, it's, it's evidence, but it's not necessarily going to be adhered to if it's not in the IEP.
Oh, you're right.
Right? So, I mean, it's evidence we can use in the email, but they can write PWNs, but we can't. Too bad. Wish you could.
Yeah, they, they didn't read the notes, but I did record it. And yeah, they, as soon as it was at that one hour, they cut it off very quickly. Yeah.
Yeah, so they adhere to the 60 minutes.
Yes, very, yes.
So when you're going to see the notes?
Um, I'm such, well, the teacher said that she'd get them to me by today or tomorrow, so.
They read the notes at your meeting?
They did not read the notes at the end, no.
See, so you have no idea if they wrote anything right or not. And they, that's their game. That's their tactic.
Now, Valerie, how do I address that? Let's say I read the notes today or tomorrow and they're not correct, then what is my?
So then you would have to write a letter in response saying, this is what, what we agreed upon. This is what was discussed. This was not in the IEP and I want it added. And, and they're going to tell you, no, we can't do that. We're going to have to have another meeting because that's what they do.
Which is perfectly okay. I mean, at which point I'd say, look, we, you don't need to fix the notes. The notes are going to go in the binder. The recording and the transcript are going to go in the binder and we'll take it from there, you know, if that becomes necessary. So if that's what you want, you know, I'm good. I'll accommodate you. I mean, you tell them that, then all of a sudden they just go, I don't know, I don't really want that. What can I do for you about the notes? I mean, it's, it's, it's Esop's fable about the wind and the sun, having an argument about who gets the guy's coat off. And then the wind blows hard to get the guy's coat off and the guy holds on to his coat. And then the sun shines hard on him, heats him up and he takes the coat off himself. So a whole lot of times you can make them do the right thing by making them say, well, it really sucks if I do the wrong thing. I guess I better do something else. Usually, if you can find a way to do that, it's obviously a lot less work.
Yeah, so.
And they, and they're in a bad place because here are the notes, here's a recording that went on and said what it was. And here's the notes that prove that they infringed on parent participation by excluding parent input, by lying in the notes. And that's going to sink their ship. That's a denial of faith right there. That's a procedural denial of shit, of faith, which holds them below the waterline and they sink. So if they want that there, okay, so you get to use that. And you can negotiate something that you can actually get for the kid, which maybe you'd never get in an IP anyhow.
Yeah, that's your negotiating tool. But that's also the point, that it's, you must make sure you always read the notes because it's a way that they use to mess parents up and not get it in the IP. If it's not in the IP, it's not going to happen. So, you know, you, you might, you could have the most wonderful IP meeting and go, oh, my gosh, that was the most amazing IP I ever had. Everyone was so collaborative and we thought outside of the box and we were innovative and we came up with resolutions. And then, and then, and the parents end up getting the IP and it doesn't say anything that happened in the meeting. And so, nothing happened.
Why you record the meeting because you can enforce what was said in the meeting.
Yes.
And I also wanted some goals added, which of course, you know, they said they would add. So it'll be interesting to see if they did add the goals I had asked for.
Well, when you were, that should have been a discussion, like I'm requesting these goals. Let's have a discussion. Are they going to be adopted into the IP? And the team discusses it. They say yes, or they say no. That's how you have to do it, Liz, because if you don't, Demetra, like we had to do today, like I kept pushing them. How many times did I say to them, Demetra, is the goal met, is the goal met or not met? Are we going to write not met? I must have said it six times and we had a discussion. Then they tried to go on. No, we didn't decide yet. And then they had a discussion, then they tried to move on. Then I said, is it not met? I mean, I think that happened like three times.
Yes, it did. That's right. It did happen and you could pull in and back, pull in and back. You had to keep doing it.
You have to hold them to the fire and you have to make them make a decision and then you have to make them write it down.
Yep, yep.
And otherwise, ain't going to happen. So.
Any of the questions you have, any question that you have to have, make sure you get an answer and make sure that you write it down too, like as the parent and that it's going to be addressed and recorded in, you know, their notes. You have to.
It's a delay tactic, Liz, because they can say, oh, isn't that nice? Liz asked for some goals. Oh, parent asks for some goals. And it's even in the, it's even in the agenda. Well, that's all it is. Parent asks for goals. They didn't discuss goals. They didn't decide if they're going to adopt the goals and they didn't add the goals to your IP. So now you're back to square one and you have to do it all over again at your next meeting.
Which I, I'm all dead against that. I let, I believe in letting them do it wrong. Unless they're paying you at least $25 an hour, and that's cheap. Clean up their act for them. Why are you doing it? Why not let them screw up? If they want me to clean up their act, I want to be able to bill them for that. If I can't bill them for that, then let them screw up. Now.
But if we.
Decide some reading homework. I'd like, I'd like you to go read carefully Ninth Circuit, MC v Antelope Valley Union High School District. There's all sorts of exceedingly good stuff in there, especially about how they deny faith if they don't actually put in the IP what they say they're going to do. That's really important. So they go ahead and they screw up and then you have a nice conversation with their attorney or whatever. And then you come up and you, you go in there, what do I actually need for my kid? And, and well, you know, if you give me, you know, a pot of 10,000 bucks or something like this, I can get some services done. Maybe I can forget about all that stuff that you did. That's many times much more worthwhile than trying to get the IP straightened out so that then they don't do it anyway.
Yeah, but most parents don't want to have to go hire an attorney or, or go file a complaint if they don't have to.
Well, you don't have, you don't necessarily have to hire an attorney, but the fact is you have them in a situation where you've got them dead to rights and, and you enforce those rights. And the reason they do it isn't because he had chit chat in an IP meeting. It's because they're dotty-bobo if they don't. And, and, and that's, and that's cheaper and a lot less trouble usually when they see this is what's going to happen than it is to argue with them endlessly about trying to get the IP right. Because in the long run, you're going to have to enforce it anyway. You can enforce them putting the right goals in the IP or whatever happy horse shit that is. Or you can enforce them actually giving you something that your kid needs. But the fact is, it's going to take you at least as much time and work to do it either way. The fact is, if they figure that you're not going to enforce it, if they figure that if they run the red light, nobody's going to stop them, they're going to keep on running the red lights. And what are you going to do? In the end, you got to be able to say, sir, you need to get out of the car. And he doesn't get out of the car, he gets helped out of the car. Ultimately, if you're not ready to make that happen and they know you're not ready to make that happen, why were they going to, why are they going to come across and do the right thing?
I know, I know. This is why I, I'm constantly telling parents, when it gets to that point, I say, you have to file a complaint now. We either have to file a complaint or we have to file due process because you can't keep letting them do this. Is Melissa here? Is Melissa on this call?
I don't see that name.
Okay, she said she was going to be on. Yeah, she's one of those moms that I've been telling her for about six months. She asked to file a complaint.
It's what they say in the police academy. First you ask them, then you tell them, then you make them. Sir, could you please step out of the car? Sir, you need to get out of the car. And the next news is that the sir gets helped out of the car. And, and our role is cops. If we keep on saying, sir, can you please get out of the car? Sir, I told you eight times, you need, I'd like you to get out of the car. And sir, keep sitting in the car, sir's going to keep right on sitting in the car. So at some point he needs to be told and then he needs to be helped. And, and that's, that's the situation we're in here. If you're not ready to, to go there and they know you're not ready to go there, then you're not going to get anything that you need. And it's not because they're bad, they're such bad people. It's because they see like any two-year-old that if nothing happens, they don't have to do anything.
I know, I know, Peter. I absolutely agree with you. Yeah, it's up to us to enforce our child's IEP. That's the way it is. Because school districts do not enforce themselves. They get away with whatever they possibly can. That's the bottom line.
Valerie, can I ask a question about? What, because we just wanted to, I don't know, Carrie was just asking right now because he's here too. Who determines like met, partially met and not met, you know? Because that, there's something to be said about.
The goal, the person in charge of implementing that goal. And you know how it says under the goal, person, what does it say? Responsible. Person's responsible. And then it'll say teacher, and then if anyone else is going to be tagged onto it. But it also, that first person that's responsible is the person responsible. And that, that person that, that, that reports on it and determines whether it was met or not or.
Okay, so, so you're, so you're telling me that like for the reading comprehension we had today with the language arts teacher, she put partially met, there's got to be, I'm sorry, but there's got to be some kind of motivation to put that. I mean, I would think they don't want to look bad and they're never going to put.
Oh, yeah, they're never going to put not met. They don't, they, that, that'll hold them accountable for failing to provide educational benefit.
You want to hear the sounds of silence. One of the ways you get to hear the sounds of silence is when they talk this stuff about how the kids made all kind of progress and they can read and stuff like that. And you have the kid read something. Which you can't do. And so then you hear them, they all sit there like graving images. I mean, what are they going to say?
Yeah, like, I think you guys should tape Constantine, videotape him. And he had these issues. Because you know how they were arguing today about, oh, yes, he can do this. Oh, yes, he can do that. And you were disagreeing with that?
Yeah.
A videotape shuts that down pretty fast. But what was your, go ahead.
No, Carrie.
I, I think that the test told the whole story. The test that they said was flagged, that they never told us was flagged for whatever reason. You know, as if like that was on purpose by him to throw them off or something. I think that kind of told the whole story though, because, yeah, he rushed through it because he couldn't do it.
Yes, and they were trying to make it seem like, oh, he's really higher than that. He, he can do much better because he rushed through. And then we finally got, you're right, Carrie, we, we got to the point that, no, he, he, he can't do a compare and contract essay. Not, you know, he can do, he can, he can cite evidence, but he can't do a, or whatever.
Like persuasive. He couldn't write persuasive or think outside of the box. And it really bothered me when the teacher said like, oh, he's doing fine. Well, what's his grade? What was his grade on that one written sample that you're looking at? Oh, you did average. Really? Average is what I'm going to settle with? Okay, I guess he's fine.
And we had to ask her three times what the grade was. Notice how she was skirting us and she wouldn't answer?
Yeah, and the thing that really pissed me off was that she was trying to make it sound like he was manipulating when he was actually just taking the test and, and he couldn't take it. So he did what he, he did whatever he had to do to get out of there as quickly as possible.
Right.
Which I think somebody who doesn't understand is going to do. Because they don't want to be in that position any longer, right?
Yes, yes.
So I like to point out to them, yeah, okay, so you're blaming the kid. There's a problem here and somebody ends up, has to end up holding that turd on the coffee table. And so you're going to make it the kid. But the fact is, what evidence, what assessments have you done to demonstrate that the reason the kid is rushing through is because he just doesn't want to do the work or, or because he's such a genius and stuff like that? What assessments have you actually done to prove that that's true?
Well, that's what I was saying was like, you know, this is the test that you're using. This is the reliable, legitimate.
It was iReady. It was iReady.
It's what, the iReady test. You're using this as the valid tool to determine his proficiency and grade level, you know, levels. And now you're telling me that he just kind of wanted to rush through it, but you're going to use that? I mean, if that's the case, then find another alternative that truly is going to assess.
Exactly. There's Valerie's words for you. Look, you picked iReady. You say that iReady says where the kid is. Okay, so iReady said where the kid is. Because iReady said, well, you didn't want to hear. All of a sudden, iReady didn't tell you the truth. Well, that's so, then how come you're using iReady?
That's right.
iReady is.
Oh, and they love iReady too.
They, Valerie, I'm a, you know, I'm a teacher and iReady is not an accurate assessment.
No.
No, it isn't.
It's a computerized assessment. And I know, and I taught every grade. Kids don't take it seriously.
Yeah, and they're independent.
Yeah, the kids, oh, well, the kids look at each other's computers and, and, and they do what the other kid is doing. Or, and they're cheating or asking other, because the teachers never.
Yeah, they're not watching.
They're not watching.
No.
You should assess like the real-time environment. If you're going to assess them on their performance at school, that, that should reflect the same platform as the assessment and not some computer thing that they're just going to rush through and just kind of joke about it.
Yeah, well, it's easier for them to use that. I, I've been bitching about iReady for years, saying that's a valid tool for assessment. And they put so much weight on those iReady scores.
And they shouldn't. And, and you should ask for a, 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 a teacher assessment where the teacher sits with the child and asks the questions and, and, and the one-on-one because computerized assessments are not valid. I don't even, as a teacher, we do not have to make them. We, we do, I don't send them home because I know they're inaccurate assessments and parents just get upset over them because they're so inaccurate. And, and kids always test way below their normal, their, 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 their normal, their normal.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, their normal ability. They test below and way below. So I never even send it home because I know it's inaccurate. And I just do one-on-one assessments, just after a one-on-one.
You know, I tell you, I already, I've done one-on-one assessments with my son during this whole lockdown. When I sat with him every day with that book and we, we worked, we did four to five hours of one entry in Anne Frank and it took us that long for him to understand it. So I did my one-on-one assessment with him and it wasn't, it wasn't good.
And if they're going to go, if they're going to flag a test that was done in December, are they just, are they just going to ambush us with that or like what they did today at our IEP?
Because remember, I asked for an independent evaluation to clear all this up. And she agreed to provide us with an assessment plan. Now she hasn't definitely said you get an IEE, but they're going to assess through a standardized measure.
Uh huh.
Yes.
I hope they don't use the Woodcock-Johnson again because that, you know.
Well, if they do, if, if it's the district that does it. Well, if they do, if if it's the district that does it, I'm still gonna disagree with it and get our I E E. So either way, we're gonna get our I E E. Hopefully, we'll just get it first, and they won't have, they won't get to assess first. It just depends on the last time that he was assessed.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want to try to make him do the right thing and say, oh, I don't want you to do this test or that test. The more you get involved with they do, the more you're responsible for it, and the more they can bitch about how they didn't get to do the job right because the parent made him do this, or made him do that, or couldn't let him do this or that. So what we want to do is, we want to let them do whatever they want, and they get an I E.
Right.
Yeah. It's always about the I E E. It doesn't matter what they do, because it's not gonna be accurate. They're not gonna give you the right goals or recommendations anyway, no matter what test it is. That's just the way it is, always. So, so they agreed to do all of your I E Es, Liz, because you asked for a bunch of them.
Um, she said she'd get back to me. She wanted to look at the dates of the the last I E Es that were done, and I.
You need to look, Liz.
Oh, I did. I looked back at all at my paperwork, and the last ones that were in eighteen, 2018.
But what were they?
But not everything, not everything.
More than two years or or less than two years? Because once you get past the two-year mark, then you're getting into the area where they can assess again. So it was it, was it?
It was, it's a little bit like January seventeen.
Of 2018.
All right, so the two years is up, for sure.
Yeah.
However, depending on what it is, is this an area which they knew they needed to assess in all this time, and never got around to doing it, even though they were on notice to do so more recently than the last time they worked?
Yeah, and it's not everything, like the psychological, that one was done. They didn't do, that was in seventeen. They didn't do an auditory processing. They didn't do a sensory. They didn't. There's a lot of them that they didn't do.
Right.
And they didn't do it since. And were they put on notice since then that the kid has auditory processing problems?
No, no, there's, there's nothing like that on her I P. But they're.
I already knew the answer to that. I was just asking. So if they already, if they've been put on notice, you need to do the auditory processing assessment in the last two years. You say, look, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what you did two and a half years ago. I'm disagreeing with your failure to assess, and you knew perfectly well you were on notice to do so. And that's why I'm entitled to an I E. I'm entitled to an I E in auditory processing in C A P T, because you've known this kid has an auditory processing problem. We've talked about it in the I P meetings, and you haven't done it. And that's why we're asking for an I E. You don't get to do it now. When you knew you to assess in this area of disability, and you blew it off. And the same thing goes with also with O T. When's the last time they did an O T assessment? Right, two and a half years ago. Well, have you been complaining that the kid is fidgety and jumpy, and 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 doesn't sit still in class, and he books out of the classroom time to time, and obviously has sensory problems and stuff? You've been seeing that he has sensory problems these past couple of years, this, you know, six months ago, last time we were in an I P, and you never offered to assess in this area? We need an I E and O T from somebody who's gonna assess it. That's how you ask for those I E Es. No, he didn't. No, we're not, we're not disagreeing with two and a half years ago. We're disagreeing with you knew you were supposed to do, and you didn't do it.
Oh, yeah, but then you say that, and they just look at you like they don't care, you know?
That's perfectly okay. So you give them the, you you put it in writing and everything like that, and you throw in a compliance complaint two and a half months from now, that without unnecessary delay, they neither filed nor funded the I E that you requested.
Okay.
So does.
And 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 they sit there figuring, if they just sit there like gravin' images and don't say anything, or else they just tell you, no, that you're gonna whimper a little bit and go away. And so, and they're half right. You do go away. You wait for the thing to mature and ripen, get ready to come off the tree. And then you go ahead and you file your compliance complaint, or if the C D doesn't do the right thing, okay, so you file for a hearing. Say, okay, you want to spend the $20,000 to fight the hearing, or you want to cough up the I E?
Right.
I mean, what you gotta do. And if they know you're gonna do it, then usually you don't gotta do it.
Right. Now, because it's been more than two years, do they have to take, do the assessments first, district assessments, and then?
Well, first of all, you, the the vision and the auditory, you're gonna get an outside assessment anyway, because they don't have vision and auditory person. So you're gonna get that, so that's not a problem. But the other ones, whatever, I don't remember what they were, but if it's an O T, this the psych, there's the, those are are the ones in question that you might have to fight if they say.
You're entitled to an I E for two reasons. One of them, they did an assessment which you don't agree with. And if it's gone, if 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 it went on more than two years, it fell off the table, at least in California, because of the state statute of limitations.
Yeah.
So that's one reason. The other reason, in which you can review and memo to McDonald in 2012, and a letter to Baus in 2015, and a letter to Jennifer Carroll in 2016. There's also a couple of very nice district court cases. One of them is from 2017, very nice district court case, which I just used, I'm writing up. So I'll go ahead and I'll send that along. Look, you knew you were supposed to assess, and you didn't do it. So you need to cough up an I E because you knew all this time that you were supposed to assess, and you didn't. That way, they didn't do it all right, but they should have. That entitles you to an I E equitably.
Okay, okay.
And that's why, that's how you use their deliberate refusal to assess properly, to go ahead and get it done. And a lot of times, they don't know you're gonna do that, and then they find out.
Yeah.
And actually, lately, for some reason, C D has not been bad about this.
Really?
On I E S, they haven't been too bad. I've had one where they did the wrong thing over there, Menefee, on a visual processing thing, but I've had some others that they've been really very good lately.
Oh, that's good news.
Before it was what, man, Santa Monica, Malibu, I just had one, where the district refused to assess at all. Now the district's coughed up some I E S, because, you know, they looked around the table. They looked at the cars. And the same thing in Riverside. And they 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 even asked for reconsideration and stuff, and C D bounced them off the wall good. They 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 had to give it by our assessor, and they were talking, well, the assessor's gotta buy sexual molestation insurance and everything else like that. I said, fine, you want the assessor to have sexual molestation insurance? First off, do you require your own assessors to buy sexual molestation insurance out of their own pocket? Or and and I want to know, the other thing I want to know is, are you willing to fund it? Are you willing to publicly fund it? Because the I E is supposed to be publicly funded. You want to have them to buy extra car insurance because you think they're gonna run the kid over while they're driving the car around in their office? Then go ahead and buy the car insurance, and and that'll be fine, just so long as you pay for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I I I've heard of districts doing that, having them, requiring them to do crazy things like that.
And you can't, and they can't.
I know.
They can't require anything like that if they don't require their own assessors. So one thing that I do is, I I always ask for the contract that they give to the assessor, because I don't want them bullying my assessors.
Right.
And you have every right to see that contract.
Mm hmm. Oh, yeah. Hey, I wanted to ask you, Peter, who do you recommend for speech and language I E E? Because Catherine Bowman's kind of not doing very many, and she's usually my go-to person. Who who do?
The best one I know is Susan Holler in Arcadia.
Susan.
I'm sure there's some other good ones, but you can't go wrong with her.
And how do you spell her last name?
H O L L A R.
Okay. And she's in, what'd you say?
Arcadia.
Arcadia.
Which is off of the 210, east of Pasadena. It's kinda, I don't know, they're not far from the 605 where it comes in there.
Okay, boy, that's a, that's a ways.
Well, it depends on where you're going. There's probably some good people down your part of the world, too.
From Corona. Who's closer to Corona?
I don't know anybody in Corona. You know, I wonder if, uh, over there, Lynn Luks over there at Temecula Therapy. I don't know what they do, whether they do speech and language. I think they do. So you could check with her.
Temecula.
She's got a backbone on her. They gave her, one of my people some years ago, they started talking about how, oh, well, but the kid, you know, the kid has these speech problems, but, you know, considering how stupid she is, they use more polite language. But considering how stupid she is, well, you know, that's okay. And Luks came back. She was really pissed. She said, that is totally unethical, and I'm not putting, and I'm not going for it.
Yes.
And she was telling the the district speech and language person that she was being totally unethical.
Yay.
They kind of crumpled up. So I saw that. Luks had it, you know, Luks was proved to be a vertebrate.
Good. Okay, so what's her name again?
Lynn Luks.
Lynn.
Temecula.
L O O G S?
Luks is L U K E S.
L U K E S. Luks.
Yeah.
Lynn.
I don't know whether she's still around for I E S anymore, but she was there, and she sounded great.
All right. That's good.
He jacked them up and braced them very nicely.
Okay, good. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I love that, when they say, oh, well, they're they're performing commensurate with their intellectual ability, and so therefore, we're not going to give them services.
And you calculated their intellectual disability by taking advantage of their disabilities, like they can't see what they're looking at. They can't hear what they're listening to. And and having proved, using their disabilities, how stupid they are, you're gonna use, say now, why it is that you don't get anything done. And I like to use those words. You're saying how stupid they are, and then say, oh, we don't call anybody stupid. I said, that's right. And they don't call it torture. They call it enhanced interrogation. But here, we're gonna call it torture. We're not gonna call it collateral damage. We're gonna call it blowing up wedding parties. We're not gonna call assisting the kid. We're gonna call it dragging the kid to wherever you want it. We're not gonna do those kind of euphemisms today, and they really hate that. It it way, it's a way to discombobulate them. Make them say the truth. Make them use real words instead of acting like the Pentagon.
Yeah, I had one of my meetings today, we were, we were reviewing the psych I E E. The district's IQ was 40. That's the psych, what the psych found this kid. And he's smart. He's on the spectrum, and he has very little verbal language, but, so 40. And Dr. Chris Davison, 112.
Okay.
Can you imagine from 40 I D, that's why we were fighting, and we said, he's not 40, 112. I mean, that is, that's just.
I don't have much imagination. I was a maintenance programmer, but what I lack in imagination, I have some memory. And I remember that this is what they said 100 years ago about about Helen Keller, how stupid she was, how she was basically a turnip. And whatever else you think about her, it turned out she wasn't a turnip. And and they, you know, they've learned nothing, and they've forgotten nothing in over 100 years, and I like to remind them of that.
Yes, I know. It's unbelievable, really, really. Well, it's 6 o'clock, guys. Does anyone else have any comments you want to make, or any input, or any questions? And thanks for coming again, Peter. We love it when you, when you're here.
I like your anecdotes, Peter, your your analogies that you have. It makes it really easy to understand things for for some of us.
Yes.
Okay, well, if it's working, that's great. If you see stuff that's not working, I guess you better tell me, because not much works.
Yeah. Thank you. And Valerie, thank you. I was, you know, really happy with today, and I know I want to follow up with you. But these are really informative, so thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I was happy too, Demetra. It went a lot better than I actually thought it was going to.
Yeah, I, yeah, there was a couple of what just happened, but yeah, we'll 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 debrief about that.
We will, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, parents, thank you, and have a great, great rest of the week. I'll see you next Wednesday night. And bring your questions with you.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, Peter. Thank you so much.
Good night. Thanks, guys.